So, call the meeting to order. The February 26, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the January 16th meeting. Any errors or omissions?
No, motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Peter Steckins. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is 19 Wells Road Communication Tower. I'll turn that over to Joe.
Okay. Global Acquisitions for LLC is requesting that the application for site plan review, resource protection permit, and shoreline zoning review to construct a 180-foot-tall telecommunications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be tabled to the March 20th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board. Is there any discussion, question? Anybody want to?
I'm just curious, do we know why? Or is that appropriate for this time?
Yes, certainly. The town staff, including myself, met with a representative of the applicant. I think it was early this month, and they are actively working to revise their plans and have asked for additional time to get them ready.
That's what I figured.
The last time I spoke to them, it was their intent to submit for the March 20th meeting.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion?
I got a motion. Motion for the Board to consider, be it ordered, that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Global Acquisitions for LLC for site plan review, a resource protection permit, and shoreline zoning review to construct a 180-foot-tall telecommunications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be tabled to the March 20th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Do I have a second? Victoria. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is 1200 Shore Road Private Accessway Amendments. Alex and Brianne Fisher are requesting amendments to a previously approved private accessway for a lot located at 1200 Shore Road to allow perimeter fence to be installed along the property boundary and a gate for the accessway. Section 19-7-9, Private Accessways Review. And Ben? Is that correct? If you would like to introduce yourself and give us an overview.
Before we start, is anyone else getting a lot of feedback on these sentences? Is there any?
All I can report is when I was having a conversation with the town manager this afternoon, the IT manager inserted himself briefly to say he got the new mics installed. So I'm guessing where the inaugural use of the new microphones. And all I can say is push them back, and I will report this to the IT manager tomorrow.
I got a roadie to come out and kind of do adjustments. Some fly.
A little bit. Turn down the volume. If there's a volume that you can turn down, that will be the track.
Yes, there is.
I do know these monitors. I love these things because it makes, you know, for people with hearing aids, it makes it a lot better to hear things.
Yeah, even that may be feedback if you can turn those down.
No. No.
There's a switch on top.
There's a button in the front in the standard.
I am a part-time musician.
That's how you know this stuff.
My name's Ben Trout, and I'm president of Trademark Incorporated, a small general contractor located across from Petros. And I'm working on this project that was just permitted for a house and a barn on 1200 Shore Road. And the people bought the land. It was carved out of the land trust, so it's surrounded. It's kind of in the middle of 17 acres. And they have easement from Shore Road to get to it. I think it's, I think that road is like, the drive is like 800 feet long or something like that. And so it's very private. However, and the lot has a 30-foot buffer around inside the property. And so the client isn't very interested in having what is called split rail fence, which is a very rustic and natural fence. It's just basically posts and a lot that's actually split. And there's a couple of these fences on Shore Road. There's one in front of them, grass is just up the street. And the reason for them wanting to do this is that they are having, this is their house, and this is the barn. And this one too, kind of shows, this is the Shore Road here, and the easement coming in, and the driveway coming into their property. And so what the private tree here is a farm. And this fence is very much in keeping with the farm aesthetic. They do kind of have any courses, and I don't think the primary reason for this is to corral horses. But they're very interested in creating an aesthetic, and they're interested in just knowing where their property. In terms of how it relates to the land trust, because the land trusts are appropriately, you know, stewards of that property, and they're not supposed to, you know, wander around on that property except in one specific place where they can have a path down to their, another lot that they own down here on the water. So this type of fence is very natural looking. You know, wildlife can travel under it, through it, over it. We propose to have the, well, it's already been professional surveyed, but we would make sure that, to have a survey from that and do, you know, one foot inside the property, we put this fence. And I've already been out there with a string, and it's really, really favorable to missing trees. If we do, if there is a tree, it's in the way. We would either stop the fence on the side of the tree and continue it, or we just go down the fence. So we'll be able to do the buffer, I mean, we'll be able to do the fence without taking down any trees. The other nice thing about the fence is that it gives you a constant place to measure off of in terms of maintaining that buffer. The client is interested in, is happy to do more trees in there. They'd actually like to plant more in the buffer. So when we did the workshop, there was some type of, you know, perhaps putting a, keeping a marker on the buffer so that the present owners and future owners would be able to identify the border of the buffer as well would be amenable to that. But the only people that really have a view of it is Paul Pharaoh and the Pharaohs that live here. And, you know, they're looking pretty much, you know, 800 feet, you know, fruit and tree trees. I don't really know if it's that familiar. These people, the most of the houses, just feel, I think it's here. And the same thing, it's just heavily screened, you know, there's a lot of woods in between there. So it's really just kind of to give a sense of where the property begins and ends, because when you do have that buffer, you kind of don't really know where your property is. And it's kind of a fuzzy zone, you know? Where, so once this fence is in place, you know, they will be able to just, they'll have their trust, keep them happy. They have one daughter, they have two on the way, which is kind of exciting. And, you know, just kind of, you know, just know where their space is. And I guess that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you. As part of this evening's meeting, we're going to open this for public comment before the Board asks any questions. Just as a formal formality, I'll open this for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this project, now's the time. Please, please come to the podium and give your name and address.
This is going to get too much feedback if I stay here.
We'll find out.
My name is Chris Tolman. I live on Stony Brook Road, 47 Stony Brook Road. I'm a board member of the land trust, so we came as the neighboring of others to sort of see what was planned. It sounds like the split rail fence is going to be entirely on their property, so that's not an issue for us. There was some discussion of a fence gate. Was that going to be by Shore Road or the board's? I think that's going to be on the buffer. On the buffer, yeah. What I think, we think it's actually really good for our relationship, for the client's relationship with the land trust, you know, just so that they don't wander around.
Okay. I'm sorry, just, are there any other? Let's do the comments, and then we'll do the answers to the comments. And I'm sure that question was coming up from the Board as well, about the location of the gate. Are you upset? Anything else? Any other comments, questions?
As stewards of the, I'm on the stewardship committee as well for the land trust, and we've been monitoring the property, and they seem to be staying in their property. We'll have to ensure that. Did you have any other questions to answer?
No. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other audience members for comment, I'll close the public comment section, and we'll move into answering the questions and addressing board members' questions. So, anyone here want to kick it off? Go ahead, Jonathan.
So there was, when you guys came to the workshop, there was talk about some fence along the drive and...
That was just totally, we can't do that.
Okay. And then the, there was talk about a gate on Shore Road. That's, they're not doing that either?
No, the only way that that would happen is if, my client sent me a photo of a gate that's on Shore Road that appears as on the city town property. And so, but I don't think that that can happen. It would not be a gate. It might be two posts if they allow us to have something to announce where the driveway is, just so you can see the location of it. But you can't have a gateway up on the street because it'd be dangerous. There's no way to wait for it to open and pull it, so.
So it's an non-issue right now?
It's an issue.
All right. Thank you.
The gate that we do up here, you know, it'll swing into their property, so, you know, it won't go out and open up some easement.
Ben, I know we get feedback. Could you get just a little closer to the microphone?
Could I follow up on that?
You can.
I just want to, I want it on the record that you said that you weren't putting the gate on Shore Road, because whatever. If you decided you were going to put the gate in the right-of-way of Shore Road, it would get you out of the limitations from SALT because you weren't in the driveway. But if you were going to try to do that, it would still need to come back to the Planning Board, because that would be a substantial amendment to the private accessway permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
Victoria?
I'm Sasha Carey, Simone. Does this go to the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds? Does anything get filed?
Well, technically, this is an amendment to the private accessway permit. And the private accessway, when it was approved, was recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. Because there's no change to the actual driveway, we wouldn't normally require this be rerecorded.
Okay. I just want to know what the level of standards I'm going to now address would be, the tough ones?
In my opinion, you know, when approval by the Planning Board is an approval, whether or not, it's recorded in the Registry of Deeds.
Okay. All right. So I have a few questions.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Just to get, okay. Oh, I, I just, I did not understand the note that said, "Proposed stone monument at property corners typical for five."
Okay, yes.
What does that mean?
So instead of having a lot of posts on the corners, we do a granite post.
Okay, for five? There's five corners?
Yeah, there's five corners, yes.
Okay. I have a four. Can you just?
There's one that got, um, uh...
Can you count out where the four would be, or?
This is actually one here. This is only a draw.
Oh, okay.
So there'd be, instead of, I think that the posts is typically a five-inch round post.
I was going to ask you about that. In your letter, you said install granite posts to be six-by-six.
Yeah, and then these posts would be six-by-six.
Six tall? Six wide?
No, 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 no. Six inches by six inches.
Six inches.
And then they'd be, you know, four feet high, whatever.
Okay. You must have known. I have no idea.
Yeah, no, sorry about that.
If anyone's seen that movie. Okay.
That's just, I don't know why I want to do that, but that's what they left to do.
So how would that look? So you have the fence, which is not supposed to, I read that the code enforcement officer doesn't want it to be actually on...
Right, it has to be stepped in.
Stepped in.
Yeah.
And then where are these posts going to be? They also going to be stepped in slightly?
They have to be, yes.
Okay.
And then the pins are right outside of the granite post, and you can see them, they're surveyed and they're, you know, they're clearly visible. So the fence has to step in, or otherwise it's...
So the fence, six, and the posts, and then, so they're just, they're all lined up together?
Yeah, the posts are not actually the boundary markers, just a, just a little bit, stepping it up a little bit in terms of design, I guess.
Okay. So you did mention that you are willing to put some type of boulder, because we had discussed that. But there was nothing on the plan, either depicting where they go, their size, their numbers. There's nothing here.
So I, I mean, I'll be clear that we would rather not have to do that. And that's why I was more, something that was brought out to me at that workshop, you know, that the fence is very important to the client, so if we have to do something, we might be willing to, you know, to discuss that with you. What I was thinking would be nice is, I mean, again, you're going to have these clear lines of sight, and it's not like, like the ball soon as the buffer is just, this is all going to be desolated in here. I mean, they want a little more tree so that it feels like the buffer comes in and out of the, you know, that it's not just kind of forced. And if they could, they would, you know, mow down any scrap that they possibly could. This is going over time. This is, you know, that buffer is going to kind of wander, and they want to do some fruit trees down here they were talking about. And there's definitely going to be some sort of tree cluster in here. And, you know, they would like it to, that buffer to not be so, you know, contrived and straight. What I was thinking would be nice to do is to mark the corners with, what I've seen, I can't, like, you'll see it when a latitude and longitude is meant to be somewhere. It's just a granite, a piece of granite that's flush with the earth, has a piece of metal that so that you can find it if you, for whatever reason, it gets covered over time. And I would do those in the corner, and probably one in between. And really, it's, when you get down to it, this is obviously a long-term project for these, you know, listeners that are homestead. And if they do sell it one day, they're going to have to communicate that the buffer exists, and you can, you can let the new owners know that they can either measure up that fence to maintain that buffer, or that there will be these markers in there. But to me, to, you know, to put boards around, I mean, people are going to want to get rid of those. I mean, they're just, they're not going to work for the aesthetic of the farm. I think that something that will really work over time would be something that's flush with the earth, like I said, that has a piece of metal so that you can find it. The client is on, you know, my client, it's on them to maintain that buffer over time, and I know that they intend to do that. Because as I said, they, I mean, this place is, it's cleared right now, and it's, there's blasting going on, and it looks like you could pray. But over time, that buffer is going to look like it wanders in into this, and it looks like a more natural environment. And so I think if we did a step, just something flush with the ground, that that would satisfy you that it is marked, but really, it's really the integrity of the owner to maintain that stewardship of the buffer. And I really, I really can tell you that I believe that they're going to do that. They're not, I mean, I've worked for these people over the years, and they just, they have a really nice aesthetic, and I know that's what they're going to want to create.
Okay. I would prefer some boulders because of past projects we've worked on, but I'd like to throw this out to the Board. You're hearing what they're proposing. I would prefer boulders, so I'm just curious what other people think.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
In usual circumstances, I would be thinking along the lines of Victoria with the boulders. However, I got to remember that the property that's surrounding this is Cape Land Trust, and the interest of Cape Land Trust is maintaining their land. So I think they would probably be the ultimate sort of watchdogs of their own property that's surrounding this property. And if they saw that there was a problem, if that the buffer was disappearing from this property by these owners, or even owners down the road, that they would most likely contact the town and get code enforcement down there. So this wouldn't be a situation where it's sort of going to be an absentee neighbor that the landowner is going to be able to do whatever they want. It's actually going to be a very active neighbor, I would believe, not to put it on Cape Land Trust, but I would think that that would make me feel a little better. I do like the idea of having something kind of permanent there. The flat rocks seem kind of like a good thing to use when it comes to something more permanent than just doing, just than maybe having the large boulders. But we have been doing a lot of boulders recently, so to keep that precedent, I think, it's something to think about, too. But in this case, I think with the, with the land trust being sort of the ultimate people who are going to be watching, then the land, this property owner and the future owners of this property are going to have to maintain that buffer, or they're going to get a visit from the town.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm inclined to think along John's lines, that given the size of the parcel, the particular setting where it's surrounded by land trust land, and that it's a, basically a quasi-farm type of situation, house, barn, horses, and this type of thing, I think the monumenting the corners with a flat marker would suffice. The boulders have been more in the context of trying to remind people that they can't take their lawn mowers and extend the lawn, you know, surreptitiously into the boundary area. So I would be personally happy with just the monumented corners and not require boulders.
I have a question. You talked, you mentioned that the area right now is pretty much clear cut. But when you say it's clear cut, you mean with inside the 30-foot setback?
Yeah.
So the, what's, what's in the setback? Is it still trees? What is in that 30 feet between the property line and the setback? Is that still forested?
Yeah, it's just kind of scrub trees. I mean, it was, there's not, that was a pretty, that lot was pretty thin, actually. And so, I mean, like, like, from here, it's like, it is kind of grassy. Up here, there's a lot of, you know, a little blueberry sod, or it's some sort of a ground cover. And again, I think that over time, when you, when you, they're not going to mow in here, but, you know, they're, if you do have grass up here, it's going to, it's going to close in there. That buffer is going to change over time, and they can't go in and mow it. So I think that, in my mind, what would make the buffer look better is if there is brown cover in there, so you don't have like a hay field in your buffer, but, you know, that blueberry sod is very, very pretty.
I guess where I'm kind of going is, I understand what you're saying about how these people want to maintain their property, but if something needs Planning Board approval, now's the time to get it.
Yeah.
So it's not the time to say, I think we might want to do this. It's the time to say, this is what we want to do, and this is what we want to put in here. So that's, that's kind of where my brain's going, so.
Well, I mean, if I, I mean, what I'm proposing, if you guys want to have us to do the markers, is that I would, I would know that I can even say wholeheartedly that we would be totally on board with doing those flush, and they're not, they're not little flat things. I mean, they would be like substantial, like, you know, you know, eight or 12 inches thick and located on those corners of probably the water between with the metal so that you can find it. And then I would take a step further and ask for permission that we, I think we can plant inside the buffer? We can add trees?
I, I've been asked this question, and I've said, yes, absolutely. You can add to the buffer.
That would be great.
But if I could just, what I need to make clear, because some people have misinterpreted this in the past, is the idea is that you would preserve the duff layer. So you rake the duff layer aside, you put in your additional plantings, you put the duff layer back. So the addition of trees and planting shouldn't be used as a way to expand the lawn area.
Right. Got you. So, I mean, that would be the two things that I'm willing to, I don't know if it's really concession, because I think it's a positive. They're allowed to add trees with, just without removing that, you know, existing cover, as you're saying, and to have those flat markers.
So you're proposing that there would be pins to mark the boundary, there would be granite posts in, as part of the fence, to mark the corners of the fence?
Mm-hmm.
And then on the 30-foot setback corners, you would put other markers? Did I understand that correctly?
Right.
And how would you differentiate the setback markers from the boundary markers?
Because these, this will be, the boundary, the boundary markers are outside the fence, and so by, you know, again, you have to tell the new people that these markers exist and that there's a buffer, and that, you know, you can kind of, you know, they grow acquainted with where they are and where the other one is, and you know you can't go out into that. And again, it just gets into integrity, really. I mean, because you can have boulders and mow around with boulders. You know, you're either going to buy by the law or not. The other nice thing I like about that fence is that, I mean, these boulders, I mean, these markers that I'm proposing, I think, right, with that fence there, you can almost pour tape on it. But I don't think it's going to get to that point. I think, I think that what they're really pushing is that kind of winding into the, into the building and above. And this pine, obviously, is a feature that they're trying to, you know, add to the, you know, feel and vibe of the place.
Yeah, I noticed that. But it's not part of what we need to prove.
This is all, see, they're the guys that did the light for waves.
Yep. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Victoria. I thought I heard something about a light fixture at our...
Yeah, that's just, I think it's going to be taken up with Dan. It's just a mailbox, and if they can up the light on it, it'll be so light, probably.
I wasn't, you know, the next neighbor over has those really nice granite lights on granite posts. So I wasn't sure if you were going in that direction with all the granite.
Yeah, we're not trying to, we're not looking for permission from the Planning Board, but I think Danny said that that's something that he touched on the fence about, you can have a mailbox.
I wasn't sure what you were asking for, so I just wanted to clarify tonight.
No, no, I, I...
Okay, so there won't be, excuse me. Go ahead, Simone.
This applicant did have a miscellaneous list of things they were looking at, and the code enforcement officer and I talked about that. And what we came up with is there were certain things, that there was no way you could do them without going back to the Planning Board, because they were amendment to the private accessway permit. And then there were things that you could do, because they were the things that everybody could do. So for example, if the applicant wanted to put a mailbox in the right-of-way of Shore Road, that's the kind of thing anyone would do. If anyone else would be allowed to put a light by their mailbox, then that would be something that this applicant could do without coming to the Planning Board. So I just want to make that clear, that that's why there's a little bit of ebb and flow on this, that the position has been that anything that's in the right-of-way of the, of the... on this, that the position has been that anything that's in the right-of-way of the private accessway, anything that's on the lot, needs to come back to the planning board. Things that are outside of the right-of-way, that are between the edge of the right-of-way for the private accessway and the right-of-way of Shore Road, would be something that you, anyone else would work with, usually with the public works director. So if they change their mind about where they want to put things, they could be right back here.
I'm just trying to remember what I heard from the workshop and just trying to plug it in based on what's in front of us. I think that might just be, I was just wondering if we're going to maybe make a motion about granite posts, you know, because it's not in this motion. And that's why I was asking, are we going to get an updated plat? I mean, are we just looking to put things in the motion, Maureen, because we're not going to get an updated plat?
If the planning board uses the motion that's been drafted, there is a note here that the fence posts be placed at the property corners just inside the property line to avoid disturbing the property pins. And I didn't put a fourth condition, which is usually that the plans be revised before anything else happens. That's probably a good condition to put on there. If you don't put it on there, I'm still going to ask the applicant to revise the plans to reflect whatever conditions you put on the approval.
I was thinking that those granite, those five, six-by-six, that's not the same thing as the fence post.
Is it is. It's number three.
Oh, it is, okay.
So what they're doing is, where you would normally have a fence, you have, you know, the rail and then you have the fence post, once the fence post hits the corner, they're not going to use a wooden post, they're going to put in a granite post.
I didn't...
Took me a little while, too.
Okay. Then my apologies, I'm just trying to figure that out, okay. How about those iron markers then, once again? Are we done deliberating on that? Is everyone on board to go with the iron markers?
It's fine.
I mean, iron markers are standard procedure.
So I'm just wondering if we want to get...
You're talking about the markers at the corners or the, he's talking about the monuments for the 30-foot setback?
Monuments.
So that's like a six-by-six granite sign.
That's what I wanted to get, the size, the number, the placement.
With metal, with a piece of rebar or some kind of metal, driven through it and then it's round, so that you can find it with metal detector.
What would you call those? Just...
Surveyor's monument.
Yeah.
It's called a surveyor's monument?
Flush with the ground.
And where would you place those?
I would do the five corners of the buffer, and then I would go so far as to put in one in between if you'd like. You know, I'm, you know, so...
Yeah.
And halfway between?
You have one here, one here, one here, and then maybe these G1s in the middle.
Uh, halfway?
I would...
Do the ones in the middle, does it add any value?
Again, I mean, if you're wondering, let's just say that, you know, we're trying to decide if we want to plant a building, you know, if we want to, I think that granite monument is really going to serve for like the first two seasons, you know, to establish, you know, your go fly zones, you know? And so it's just going to give them, you know, until they establish the place where it is made here, it's a place where you can have your buddy standing there, you can see the straight line.
It's fine, yeah, I guess, yeah, I understand. I just think if it adds any value, but I guess they're not expensive items really either.
No, I mean, in the scene, it's not expensive items. I mean, we have to go buy the granite posts and we'll just, we'll buy some of those cobbles and have to drill. The other nice thing is that when you drill through it, if you drive where you are through it, that will anchor the granite as well.
Joe, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I'm good as long, I prefer having the three along each property line.
So you want to do...
I mean, three along each setback. Yep, so one at each corner and one in the middle.
Yeah.
So where are we going to add that in our motion? Yeah, I'd like to put it into the motion. I'm trying to make sure that the things that we've discussed get captured in the motion. So...
So we're asking for four?
Okay, so that was, that's just one in the motion, number four. Yes, we would add number four. Maureen is completely writing.
She's writing one too? Okay, I'm just trying to, that's why I'm trying to get the wording, make sure...
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Peter.
Maureen, your memorandum and the draft resolution mentioned no structure within 10 feet of the building envelope. If the building envelope is indeed the setback line, the plans do show that both the house and the barn within that 10-foot area, am I missing something here?
It would require the plans you're seeing to be slightly modified.
Okay.
And actually, I actually have that in, since I gave you guys this, this has been pulled off of, this, this is the design that, or they're looking, actually, it's funny, we were going to use the barn first, and then they found that they were having twins on the way, so they changed the...
They decided they needed a house first.
So the barn is kind of capable and that they shifted a little bit. We don't have a permit for the barn yet, but we do have a permit for that.
So you are abiding by the 10 feet?
Yes.
Inside the setback line? The house? Says on here that no structure shall be within 10 feet of the setback.
Well, this is 10 feet right here, the way that we have this right now, on the approved permit, four feet out of that boundary. But that was, we pulled it off of there just so we had room for overdig.
This shows one foot setback.
Yeah, that's been changed, the approved permit.
Yes, I do.
I brought this plan because this is the one that I submitted to you guys, and then when I met with, I had a pre, you know, I sat down with Ben and put the set of plans into a submitting for the permit before I actually applied for it to make sure that everything was cool, and we talked about that, and then we pulled it off four feet, and that's on the set of plans before the permit.
Okay, Maureen. So as I noted in the memo on page one, that since this was approved in 2015, the planning board has refined its approach to preserving buffers to avoid encroachments. And in the last six months to a year, you've had to deal with multiple issues of encroachments. And one of the most recent ones on Old Ocean House Road, you learn that when people put their buildings right on the edge of the building envelope, there is very little expectation that the integrity of the building envelope is going to be respected, that you lose vegetation immediately adjacent to where the building is. In having these conversations with the code enforcement officer, it's his suggestion that if you really do want the building envelope to be the limit of where vegetation is cleared, structures should be no closer than 10 feet, because people need to get in there, they need to have equipment in there. That's why there is a proposed motion for you to consider that says that no structure would be constructed within 10 feet of the building envelope line. The current plan that is in front of you does not comply with that. So if you were to impose that condition, the plan would need to be adjusted. It does appear that the lot is a very large lot and that there is plenty of room to move the structures so that they are 10 feet away from the building envelope line. But it's your call.
Is that a fair statement, though?
I mean...
Because if we approve this as it's written, you would need to mow that another six feet off that lawn.
Is it bigger than the quote?
I said if we approved it as it's written here. If we were to approve the motion we have currently.
I mean, I think that the fence is important enough so that we can shift the building.
So it's not, I just, I just, I don't want to approve something tonight without taking into account something that you're already, and shooting you in the foot for something that's already...
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, I think that's already plastic.
So that's the question, basically, is it already in the works, fourth foot off that line?
It is, and I don't, I was there meeting them this morning, I didn't look at them, and they've got the whole thing scraped off and just, I mean, it's a big pile of mud and rubble up there. I mean, it's a, there's a, the land kind of comes up and the house is sitting on top of that. And so we had to carve into that ledge and actually, this terrace sits on the highest corner of the property. As we move, if we move it, from the, as we move it this way, we're going to lose our natural ledge, you know, because the thinking, the hope was that we expose this ledge and so that that terrace could just kind of become ledge and you kind of kneel down to that pond. And so as we shift it forward, you know, you also...
I understand. And the question was, what's the impact going to be, so?
Well, so it seems like that this was approved with a 30-foot setback to the building already, and they proceeded on that. So I'm not sure how we can change that at this point.
I mean, I kind of feel like if, if you need to maintain a 10-foot setback from your setback, then you should, the buffer should be bigger. But once you say it's the building envelope, I mean, that's your building envelope. And in my mind, I'm not trying to make that...
I'm not disagreeing, I'm not arguing, I just wanted to make it really clear that we don't, to ensure we don't do something that's going to create more problems than it solves, so.
30-foot setback is, that's not a function of the zone that it's in, right? It's a function of the requirement for a buffer.
The 30-foot is a mandatory setback for structures in the RA district, but there isn't anything in the RA district that says you can't completely clear out all of the vegetation in that 30-foot setback. You're supposed to keep the building 30 feet away. What the planning board has done, when you are reviewing development, is that there is also a buffer requirement with new, with these lots. And the least expensive way for property owners to meet the buffer requirement is to promise to leave the existing vegetation in place. So that's why your 30-foot setback ends up becoming a 30-foot buffer strip. And when people are blasting at the edge, that means your 30-foot buffer strip becomes a 20-foot buffer strip.
When I had this conversation with Ben, and I think it was a condition of our permit, I don't know if you made it known or not, that we would, that there was any, I mean, we're not supposed to have construction activity in the buffer, obviously, but if there is any disturbance, it will be repaired.
And Mr. Troutman, I don't want to argue with you, I'm just reflecting that it's been the planning board's experience with multiple projects, that nobody can go that close to the edge of the building envelope without, without disturbing the buffer. And then we have someone coming, then Ben has to send you back here with a planting plan. So trying to, it's up to the board, how you would handle that.
Go ahead, Peter.
Could I ask you, the status quo, you've been doing grading, you haven't, you haven't set the foundation, have you?
No, so far what's happened is that they're right at the 30-foot setback, there's a erosion control, which is pretty much shredded bark, they've now shredded bark half a 30-foot setback all the way around the property. And pretty much this whole area is, you know, they may have temporary erosion, the fence has been cleared, and that, and this has all been scraped.
And what would keep you from moving your layout 10 feet?
I think you're saying the lead, there's no lead, if you move it, then there's no lead, is right?
It's going to, it would really affect how this terrace communicates with that ledge. I mean, that was designed to, to site that house up there and get that terrace situated in such a way that at most, we would, 30, we'd have to, in the worst case, that terrace would be sitting 30 inches or less off of the ledge, so it wouldn't be railing, but it would be able to expose that ledge. Once you move that building forward, it falls off precipitously, and we're going to move that up eventually.
So you'd have to candlelight, candlelight your deck off the...
No, we have a deck, instead of having natural ledge, we'd be, we'd have a mound of, you know, whatever, I don't know what it would be.
I'm looking at the board for thoughts.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're going back to, you know, kind of up against it.
The 10-foot, the soliciting contacts, seems to me, maybe we could, well, the barn you could do, right?
The barn, we can, we can shift, yeah.
So it's just the house, because of the topography and...
Correct.
And whatnot, and...
And because of timing. If we'd had this conversation a month ago, they wouldn't have blasted yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, to be honest with you, I was a little bit, I didn't know the best timing to do the fence thing because, but we just didn't...
That wasn't a criticism, that was an observation, so I just...
I mean, we should have moved forward, and so we wanted to start the project, so we went ahead and got the permit and started, and...
Well, if that area is characterized by a ledge, it seems to me less likely that there's going to be a more encroachment into the buffer. I could live with that, I guess. I think on the barn, clearly could follow the 10-foot requirement, we could maybe insist on that.
Jonathan?
I mean, I remember when we visited this property for the road construction for the private access permit, and I remember that ledge that you're talking about, it's sort of on that corner of the property and walking up on it, so I understand what you're saying, and obviously on that map, you can see the topography. I mean, I don't know if I'm going to think that the 10-foot setback is absolutely necessary, but at the same time, I say this, and I hope this is all on the record here, is that you're gonna, if you play with fire, you're going to get burned, and if you have to come back for a replanting permit, something that we just did on another property because trees blew down, and that person, I think, is going to have a pretty expensive planting plan, where it was like two-for-one or something, and they had some pretty, well, I don't think the neighbors were too upset, they seemed pretty understanding about it. But it's, the applicant needs to know that it's a big possibility that they might have to come back, and you're going to have some neighbors who are, will most likely be watching, and the town involved too, so to me, I don't think that the 10-foot structures, or 10-foot restriction is necessary, but it's almost like you might want to do it on your own.
Well, the thing, what I look at here is that we have the 10 feet here, and we pulled it back four feet, and, I mean, this is the least traveled, I mean, these are the least traveled area, all the, all the focus on, you know, living on this property is, you know, you're drawing it this way.
Excuse me, Ben, you pulled this gable in four feet back?
The, the whole thing, we shifted forward.
Oh, okay. So now you're five foot off of this.
We, I'm sorry, we shifted two feet to four feet back, and that would be because you think you have that four feet for okay.
So the thing is, you're really talking about this piece, right? The deck is all in sonnet tubes, so you're not creating as much overdig over there? The deck down?
That's actually, it says that, but that's actually part of this structure, it's that's, it actually has foundation below it.
So that's also four feet off?
Yeah.
It's still a fairly small area.
I mean, in that, that buffer zone, you know, is about 30,000 square feet. It's a, it's a lot of area.
Right, so your overdig is, at worst case, something like this? Just these two areas?
We're, there's not going to be any overdig in your...
I'm just saying your worst case, like if the guy is dug too far and you have to go in and replant.
Yes.
We'd be talking about replanting this and this.
Correct. With, you know, native vegetation. And then I assess that specifically.
Yes, I'm okay with the house and we could add the 10-foot setback on the barn, so we, that sounds like it's not a problem.
Correct.
I'd be in favor of that.
Down the road, we can certainly do that, shift that over.
Go ahead.
So my thoughts, I have gone to these sidewalks and I've seen these buildings that, you know, they, somebody has encroached, you know, they do the mowing. And in my mind, I know you're saying you've got 30, you know, this 30-foot... And in my mind, I know you're saying you've got 30, you know, this 30-foot buffer, but the thing is, if you put your house right up against it, and there's a tree growing or something else that's growing, you're going to be like, ooh, that's right on top of the house, we should cut that down. And that's exactly what we're trying to prevent. And just to give you an idea of why you're saying you got the 30, and then you're asking for 10 more, and it's because we don't want you cutting down, mowing, going into that buffer, and you put your house right up against it, and if over time, I mean, it'll grow up, you know, that area might be nothing today, 10 years from now, it could be very full, and you've got a tree growing right up against the house, you're going to say, let's take it down. That's why we want the 10. So, given what has gone on, I would want the 10, but I, I'll put it in definitely for the barn and the deck. I would like to at least say, what is done is done, but I want to give you the reason. I mean, if your house is right up against it, and a tree grows, you're going to want to cut that tree down, and that's what we don't want. But I would like language in there as far as the barn goes, if that's okay with the rest of the board, for language on the barn?
Yes, that's fine.
So, anything else? Are we ready to? I mean, I, I hate, I hate to say this now, and you guys, did you guys want a sidewalk on this? Or are you good? Okay, I just, I had to ask. I didn't want to ignore it, so...
Well, once again, just to try to, so, nothing is being sent to the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds? Is that correct? Because there is mistakes on this plaque. And I just want to find out, is it going to the registry of deeds, or is it not going to the registry?
Because this has already been recorded.
Okay.
And we're not proposing to change lot lines. I had no intention of requiring it to go to the registry of deeds.
Okay.
If the planning board wants to require that it be rerecorded, you have the right to do that.
I'm sure the board will be, because I am, I mean, there's, there's errors on here. This was, this plan was made in 1997. These owners, they're so out of date, you don't even have the name of, or the, you know, you have nothing that shows who the owner is and their lot on, on either this document that'll be filed away, or this document that'll be filed away, and I'm just troubled at how old this is, how outdated the information, how even the new owner. The only way to find out is there's a little note with the last name on here, and I would, I'm one for, you know, after this conversation is gone, we may remember what happened, but if anyone was to pull the file, because I've seen, we've gone back and over to the same lots, over and over, there's nothing on here, and that bothers me, but I'm sure it doesn't bother, but the rest of the board bothers me.
That, you know, when they purchased the property, that was what I got.
Yeah.
You know, they, I was never given another survey beyond that, that was, I got the approved plan, the road, it was like, there was like four or five pages, and...
You said there was going to be resurvey, are surveyors coming back?
Well, I want, I want, for your benefit, I want you to know that we're going to survey the buffer. And just so you know, that we're putting the fence in the right spot. You know, I've already had that, I already had the surveyor come back and put space 30 feet on the buffer.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and so that is clearly marked, and now we have that erosion control, which is kind of, you know, shredded bark, and it's, it's kind of like a little wall around the buffer.
Thank you. Anything else? Sadly, they wouldn't remember.
I understand what you're saying, but...
Yeah. That was my only other comment, Ben, just, it bothers me how outdated and the errors, but... Jonathan?
I have a motion for the board to consider.
Go right ahead.
All right, finding as a fact, Alex and Breann Fisher are requesting amendments to the private accessway granted July 21, 2015, for a lot located at 1200 Shore Road, to add, to add the installation of fencing to the allowed activities in the buffer, 30-foot buffer, which requires review under Section 19-7-9 Private Accessways. Two, removal of natural vegetation within the buffer strip must be minimized to preserve the integrity of the buffer strip as a visual screening from other properties. Three, the applicant has demonstrated that a perimeter fence can be installed without removing trees in the buffer strip. Four, the applicant substantially complies with the private accessway standard, Section 19-7-9. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented the application for Alex and Breann Fisher, permissions to the private access permit granted for 1200 Shore Road, to install a fence along the property line and in the buffer be approved, subject to the following conditions. That, number one, that the barn structure be located 10 feet from the edge of the building envelope. Two, that the extent of driveway and utility installation within the buffer be shown on the plans, and be limited to no more than 750 square feet of area disturbed within the buffer. Three, that the fence posts be placed at the property corners, placed at the property corners, excuse me, be installed just inside the property line to avoid disturbing property pins. Four, that a flush-mounted granite marker with iron posts be installed at the 30-foot setback along each corner and in the middle between each corners of the building envelope. Five, that the plans be revised to satisfy the above conditions and be submitted to the town planner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joe, second?
Can I offer a...
All right. You go first.
Okay, it's the same thing. And the, on the point to keep the barn 10 feet back from the setback line?
Yes, number one.
Number one. Can you put a minimum of 10 feet?
Uh, yes, I'd be fine with that friendly amendment.
What, what would you...
A minimum of 10 feet.
Yes, that was exactly what I was, I picked up on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you want to say the barn structure and any other structure permitted after this date?
Did that turn into a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be acceptable to me.
Acceptable to both the, the first and second. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is comment on... Oh, there it is. Comment on items not on the agenda. Seeing no one who wishes to comment on items not on the agenda, do I have another motion? Go right ahead, sir.
Move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Joe seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, all right, thank you.
They just know that works.